The water is going to go down into the water. It's not going to go towards you. It's going to go down for the scenic. Okay, you think that it's going to run. I think that's kind of like, not quite like playing with the ocean, but we're playing with the water. The water table is typically flat. And when it rains three inches, it's still going to rain the same amount of water. That popping down before the building, we have to do it. Three inches is three inches of rain. What we have to do is we have to slow it down and pack the difference. We have to mitigate between the building and the pavement, the imperfect surface. And that's when all this drainage is full. I can't speak of the violence. I did stop at O'Reilly's at our last meeting. There was a heavy rain that day also. So I wanted to run out there, went outside and looked at the edge, ran a trench in the back. There was no one. Now, that was the day that I would be living my life two years ago, whatever that was. And it seemed to me that O'Reilly's is working the way that I haven't seen it designed. That career crap didn't behind the building. It's not a lot, but it's not a lot. So I'm assuming that it's working as the engineer designed it. And that's what we have hoped in here is that we designed it, had reviewed it, there was less. We've done everything that was supposed to do to put it so well and yet we didn't do it.
I personally feel like I'm a little bit deciding on parts of it. I don't very getting a special permit on the building or any of this. I don't know. I think we should push it all to the same night. And I think that means that we need to continue. If we did what I proposed, we would have to continue this to that same night and something at all once instead of piecemealing it and approving something that you might not even, I mean, you don't even know if they'll get the special permit for the oversized building. You know what I mean? Like the whole Islam that has to come together. And to me, approving some parts and not others, because that's why we would be bothered. If this building changes, isn't it going to change other things on it?
Are you saying we should go to the first before us?
No, I'm saying that we have a special permit to come to this water because of the size of the building. So we should decide this in the same night that we have a hearing for the others.
So it's only decided on the size of the building?
Yeah.
Any buildings over 15,000 square feet need a special permit.
I'm going to motion that we push this and continue this. Do you mean, so that I can be proper, you know, we're going to do it on September 2nd too?
Yeah, but I could only do the special permit until 16th. So decide if we can continue this.
We're going to need to continue. My motion is going to be to continue it to the 16th. Send in a continuation till like the next Tuesday, like the 20th, like we've been doing so that we have all this time just in case we don't need to do anything.
So we don't want to do it for the second one?
We want to continue it further than that.
Oh, really?
That's my.
Well, we're. As a special permit, we would have to be seven months. Here we've done it since 2016. So I would be on the second.
This is 16?
This is 16, so I want to continue this to the second. You want to not be on.
Only because I want to do it all at the same time, not piecemeal. So that's my motion.
What's the timeframe of this right now? When is that extension?
It's 20 hours.
So we don't have another reason before that. So if we don't.
And go through.
If we don't have another extension, we should agree with each other.
Yep.
And it's constructive approval.
Right, can we get them to give a mutual agreement for an extension? I have a question, yeah. I would like to mutually ask for a motion for a mutually extended site and review from the one that was filed on May 27th, 21, from 8:24, 20, 21 till 9:21, 2021. So that we can have a hearing on September 16th and also look at the drainage and the rest of the site plan at the same time.
So extend to September?
21st. Mutual agreement. And. Right, that's correct.
Is your extension to the site plan due? Who's up? And you said that they were going to, it's going to appear that, no, no. Maybe someone, you know, said yes, but people was happy. And you said that the time for one's other will come now?
Sorry, sorry. I'm sorry.
August, what does that mean?
It wasn't there until 21.
Do you have that thought, that you couldn't even get word that they would extend it to late time?
Okay, for August.
Oh, I don't know if you had any thought about this now. Can you send them an email and ask them to mutually extend?
Do you want to say?
Yeah, I'm waiting here and even inside the site or yet that means to me. Who do you have?
Good. Three.
Next.
Sure. Your motion is second.
I.
Three, four. Five.
Do you want to extend for the second? Do you want to do one on the second?
Great, okay.
Nice enough. Yeah. Do we have a meeting scheduled with this department on the Tuesday?
What's up? You're on there for the purpose of being there.
Okay, so we are on that.
Can we post to that agenda tomorrow?
Sorry.
Yeah, okay. Can we post?
Amendment.
Amendment tomorrow?
Uh, if we want to do, we want.
We want, because if they don't give us the extension, they get constructive approval on Tuesday.
So we want to add it to our meeting on Tuesday night. Is it night?
I'm seeing, I'm not sure. But if I can, so can I?
You can, because it's more than two days away, so you can add it to the agenda.
Okay, so you want to add it?
You see earlier?
They can get constructive approval if they didn't put in a mutual agreement. We don't have another meeting, we have it on our agenda for Tuesday. So we have been put on the agenda for Tuesday just in case we need to act on it. Does that make sense? Are we meeting this, like, this meeting at the start of time on Tuesday?
7:20.
7:20?
Just in case. Uh, just in case, I don't see the math here, but I mean, if we could there manage to go, does it still need a special permit? The town parks in tomorrow? All right.
We can make sure that we get them. What if we?
Someone was asking to, to organize and put on a construct of the group on that same, the same point that I had on my.
Put the site plan for 314.
314.
That falls great.
Um, yeah, we don't need any permission to update the agenda. We just need to do it.
I'm ready.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So I am actually from the Zollar and Soul at the address 894 Plymouth Street in Halifax. And we are hoping to put a cap on the amount of metropolitan entries that are allowed in from Halifax. So I think I would say article and everything. And so me personally, I would like the cap to be two instead of 20%. The towns around here, the neighboring ones, Kingston has a 20% cap, Harvard also has 20%. Marshfield has a capital of two, Lakeville has 20%, Sharon has 20%, and then Nattie has a cap of two.
20% of what?
I believe that 20% is the, is a form of a new way of cap for dispensaries that are allowed into the town. So cap is the amount of dispensaries allowed, not the amount of cultivation, manufacturing operations in the town and all that. So cultivation and processing would also create, possibly more jobs than the section with less traffic. So over 175 footers will then be able to carry coming from more like the stores and are currently being served to the local markets. Halifax will only generate a set amount of revenue from the dispensaries. Having more dispensaries in the town will not increase the amount of our companies in town screaming, who will only make the local businesses struggle even more having more business women. The town will take, increase the same, the town will increase the same amount of traffic revenue if they have one, two, three, four hundred locations. More locations will need more travel from one location to another to see if these stores have product, which is causing more traffic issues for the town. The state allows towns to cap the licenses based on the number of different license, no issue above. Having a limited numbers of dispensaries will allow the companies to be more timely and provide support for key time initiatives and keeping them, helping, helping your brother.
So my question was, is they have a capital of two or 20%? What is the 20%?
Would it be like if you had?
Oh, I understand what you're saying. So you're just saying you don't want two stores a town?
I don't want more than like two locations in everything. The 20% that's.
Probably the 20% of the available property. So if there was 100, it would be 20. That's probably what it is. So like, meaning if you have 100 places that be now, and that would be a ton, I get it. But if you had 100 different places that it could go, you could only put it in 20 of those. That's what it sounds like to me. So probably like if it was 10 and then they take it. You know what I mean?
So I only want a cap to put with the town, put me two, that would be the most and everything. That way there isn't as much traffic and everything. And it would, the town would win money if they put in your section.
So it'd be less competition?
Yeah.
So you're going to have a hearing on September 2nd, I guess, I believe. And then I go.
It's too late. I was.
I know.
I had three hours to put the pass document in the pocket and I forgot. I was, that was three years ago, but the pay. Yeah, that was.
So to make it move on to the next town meeting.
So how do we definitely answer that?
I don't know if the site.
Well, I mean, we have an annual town meeting that, and I know you could do that. I don't know if it's going to be, maybe another special town meeting after 1 September. But the plans we have to hold for June, July, or changes prior to the town meeting, and that has to be advertised two days early.
We missed it by four days.
I mean, for like 20 days early or something, so.
Oh, so it needed to be on August 10th and it was like August 12th or something?
I sent that to you, I'm sorry, I remember. I enjoyed finding that I had sent it to you. I think that would lead back to her.
Yeah, I remember seeing it.
So basically you missed it there.
I am able to do this.
Yeah, okay. I was told this company related.
How many signatures did you get?
Uh, over the, I got, we were up here in New York.
So doesn't that boost up another special town meeting? Not that I'm pushing for that, but doesn't that make it so that we don't have another town meeting? Isn't that why we're having this one?
No, we have a list to prove the video. So I can put the town meeting on, and then the other article that the criminal booth guys sit on again. But then that could come to us on the end.
I thought it was.
It's not just.
I thought it was because I thought that criminal booth was taller than that, what he was saying on election day when he was getting all the signatures, that it would be, it would be like a kickoff to have a special town meeting if we did that.
I believe there was a special town meeting.
Okay, good job. Don't give up.
Thanks.
She's so cute. Everything.
Do you know?
No. Actually, it's like, yeah, she's adorable with that. And I mean, I have a, you know, I mean.
So what's I, it's still, we're going to show off.
Yeah.
Say it with him. He knows. Follow the message. It's supposed to be longer.
Okay. That's the lane status on that. I did get a call from John Pacat. He got me a message and tracked the background.
Wait, where do we go with the town now?
Yes. I'm writing up the, you know, some of that. But I think, you know, 14, 15 years, it's time to take another step. I mean, it seems like anybody for special lanes, but it would be. Well, I mean, I said it's a call from the.
Well, when I was on our agreement, there was a little more attention on that, I think.
So what happened with that?
Well, it wasn't my idea, so I'm, yeah, I said, no, I think that they need to draw and maybe say they need to put a man up, which is very bad.
Well, I mean, if we're trying to get a building permit, I'd have to go. When I spoke to Pac at five o'clock, I told him, I said, personally, I can't see probably you could, we're backing you to go get a building permit and then we can just say we're in the post of law. I mean, you don't intend for that. You keep saying you're going to do something. I said, it would take a lot for you to sense, I don't need to put stuff, make it up, but it's like zero, and it's hot, but it's not. I mean, it's pretty hard to say, okay, yeah, when you're there. We'll take it on your word, you're going to do something now.
The house is built so old, it always still. It's an F22, it's tough, it's a tough situation.
And we get tired of the master group. We're taking the last, I mean, back before 2008, everything was going out, you know, things were getting out, a lot of places were going up and they just kept finishing them up and go for that. A lot of places grew up and nobody touches it. So you can get a release and sell it. Because we have covered a lot. The town can't take that a lot. All we have is a cover. So there's no force in that. With the wire, it just would be like.
Sure. Well, that's why we have already, personally, with all the years, we've closed by that building, there's a subdivision. If it's big enough where, you know, I'm going to get a deal of the subdivision, they're just wanting to get it done while they want to work. If there's no line, well.
It's not pushed.
No, don't push. Otherwise it would be fair.
Make it stop the subdivision, not the line. It's going to be like.
Yeah, right. Understood.
All right. You will give it to the.
Oh, yeah, it's built to. But it's a renewal subscription for the 21, 22, 1 year, starting on August 21st, 2021, for the Punton Halifax Express. Do we file these with certain things? Do you know, like when you do file the newspapers somewhere and keep them or what happens?
Oh, when there's, yeah, that's what we, everyone has, I would put in the file of that for the opportunity I have to now. So we need to bring that subscription every week to get the paper.
Makes sense. Okay, I'm motion to pay the renewal.
And then also pay the renewal.
Yeah. I'm motion to, oh my gosh, pay the renewal subscription for the Punton Halifax Express and go expense of 175. Didn't you mark 25 up the second?
The motion is second.
That's second.
Yeah, the motion is second, the almost a figure, and.
Do you want to put all of the details of the next project?
Very good.
Can we take a vote to put this on the sound, please, here? In a very fast and rapid way, I had then maybe just to. I'd like to push this meeting up on the conference room. I can't see my notes where I'm at, but I believe that we did have both the national meeting. I think we're seeing, and I'm supposed to go in front of this lot, and everybody agreed that for zero to go in front of this lot and talk about secondary, but you guys could do this and you can have the motion. Remember? So then, that's why. It's not that. That's not, yeah. I want to vote it. Um, that's, yeah, that's my answer. I just kind of voted, um, for the, I think, what do we need to put in the notes? A motion to accept the meeting minutes from August eighth, two thousand twenty-one. On page with an addition on page three, under the discussion with Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board Secretary coming under the jurisdiction of the Planning Board. The addition is board voted four dash zero to be in front of the selectmen.
Is the motion seconded?
Seconded.
Motion seconded, called, okay?
Aye. So on page three, we should have a next one, okay?
Right, um, so I'm looking to, we're saying the zoning board to... Don't...
Fire.
I don't know. With the two numbers, it's fine. I've been on, it's okay. You put that one?
I'm voting aye.
It's a...
We're looking for volunteers to go on by law, so...
Do we have to vote it?
Also, I'm sorry.
Can you motion that, so? I'm wishing that, um, I'm gonna be here, so I have my, my... A motion that Gordon R. Andrews from Amy L. Street, he, uh, pointed to the zoning bylaw, would be in committee.
So motion seconded?
Seconded.
The motion seconded, called, okay?
Aye. To, to, uh, changes, you know, in that. To make full details.
I will come out from the building, inspecting those two. Some of the bylaws, this, and, and even on that one, which is... That, and that, and that's gonna all the factors, you, so...
Oh, yeah, and there's, uh, they're all daytime, um, is there any way that we could make it so that there was a nighttime, or something?
One is good.
Am I supposed to email Charlie?
Well, it's for, uh, Jim.
I'm gonna, now, oh, just you guys, so I wouldn't have to go.
Anybody wants to, you know, think of?
We haven't talked about a lot, I don't know yet. A motion to adjourn.
The motion seconded, I'll say. I'll vote it, okay?
Aye.